One at a time, everybody, remember.
All right, so we are live.
Okay, I'd like to call the Jersey City's on board of adjustment public meeting virtual to at 6:31, special meeting on Wednesday, November 4th. This meeting will be conducted by electronical means in accordance with the Senate Byron and Bear Open Public Meeting Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. Governor Murphy issued executive order 103 and 107 declaring a public health emergency and state of emergency and directing residents to quarantine and practice social distances. We would like to start our meeting. If we could have a call to order. Is there any sunshine announcements?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk. And we have the original notice and the revised sunshine announcements to be marked for the record, please.
Okay, this will be B1 for tonight.
Okay, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Not only the pledge.
I'm sorry.
The pledge.
I apologize, Commissioner. Maybe we have a pledge of allegiance to stand, please.
Yes.
Thank you for the flag.
A pledge of allegiance for the flag.
Thank you. Now we're ready to work.
Okay, maybe we have a roll call, please.
One moment. Commissioner Brown? Here. Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Bacta?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Here.
Commissioner Shadid?
Here.
And Acting Chairman McCormick?
Here.
And for the record, we have six commissioners present.
Okay, can we swear, staff, please?
Hey, I see already. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give tonight will be this truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And I, that was for Lindsey Stigman and Cameron Black.
Thank you, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, there were a number of items that were carried, so. Give me a moment, I'll share my screen. The agenda here. You have a site plan amendment that's going forward, and then case 1111 are being heard, but item number 14, Z20-003, that's for 80 Romaine Avenue, will be carried to a future date, uncertain they will be renoticing, correct if I'm wrong.
They'll be renoticing, yes.
They'll be renoticing. And then for case Z20-027 will be carried to the December 3 regular meeting with preservation of notice, I believe they are renoticing. Just going to be here on December 3.
All right, thank you. So if you were here, or anybody listening, that will be not here in cases Z20-003, 80 Romaine Avenue, that will be carried at another time. And also case Z20-027, 027, 1921 Armstrong will be carried at another meeting. Correct, Lindsay?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. So is there, we have a renewal of contractual services for the Board Attorney for the year 2021?
Yes, yeah, we just do a roll call for that.
Is our attorney going to say anything on his own behalf?
May not take the fifth, you mean?
You can do that.
Well, can't we just do it as a board as a whole?
Unanimous.
Yes. All in favor, right.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, congratulations, Vinnie. Now we have a renewal, we have a renewal of contractual services for the stenographer for the year 2021. Board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
No, that was unanimous for the stenographer. So now we're ready for case number 10, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I got interrupted on a phone call, so the stenographer was passed all in favor, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, now moving on to case Z20-083, 373 Danforth Avenue.
Yes, I'd just like to request the attorney and anyone else presenting, please raise your hand so I can promote you to the panelists, thank you.
Good evening, this is, this is Joseph Coudo with the firm of Schuman Handland on behalf of John and Mary Ann LLC.
This amendment, there was no notices for this, right?
I, no. We actually did present notices. I find to Mr. Black, we noticed in the paper and noticed the neighbors within a 200-foot radius, as well as the required utility companies and agencies. Does, does the board have receipt of the affidavit of publication and the affidavit as the notices?
We, we did get that, right, Cameron?
Yes.
I think, Bridget, you might have that as well, so we should mark that as A1 for this application.
Okay, that'll be A1 for this case.
Thank you.
Okay. This matter was, well, this application, this applicant was previously before the board in July of 2018, was granted a use in both variances for property at 373 Danforth Avenue. The project was approved, just for reference, the file number was Z17-29. I have Richard Garber of Grow Architects present, he prepared the original architectural plans, he's familiar with the application and was before this board, and he could testify how he presented, how he inspected the site before and after construction, and described the proposed amendments. Now, I would turn over to Richard Garber. Do you, the benefit of his qualifications?
No, no, we recognize Mr. Garber as a, as an expert in his field, hello, how are you, Mr. Garber?
Everybody, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Vinnie, do you want to ask the attorneys tonight about swearing?
I'm sorry, I forgot, Bridget, do you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Garber, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Richard Garber, G-A-R-B-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to the members of the board for seeing this, I believe this should be a relatively quick application, this is a project that we passed, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now, so hold on, let's see. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is an application that we actually had approved some time ago before your board, you may remember these images, this is a 16-unit four-story building at 373, 375 Danforth Avenue, and I put up this image to start because this is the rendering that I presented to you, and you'll notice in the rendering that there, there is a kind of, and I'm going to draw over this, a sort of Z-shaped planter that we had originally proposed, and for better or for worse, that planter did not make it in that kind of configuration into the final building. Now, I do have some photographs of the final building, and I am actually quite happy with the way this facade turned out and the quality and craftsmanship of the materials, and I'll take you through that. So ultimately, what we're asking the board to do is permit an amendment here where we're decreasing the size of the planter and relocating it, we will have a planter nonetheless, and we will also be proposing two five-by-five tree grates that also did not get installed during construction. So these are not life safety matters or matters that change any kind of engineering calculations or unit count or anything, they're primarily aesthetic, at least in the case of our planter in the front of the building, and obviously, the tree grates are meeting the forestry standards as put forth by the city. So, let's see, so our next slide is the approved front elevation, and again, you see there's a kind of, the whole idea here is that there was a kind of patchwork, if you will, of brick and metal panel that actually, you know, adorns the kind of front facade of the building, as well as that Z-shaped planter that is around the opening. These were the approved details of said planter, and this is the as-built elevation. Looks pretty similar, right, but you'll notice there's no planter. Now, ultimately, as well, that the patchwork pattern was executed slightly differently than our original plan, but it's fairly close, and I have to tell you, I was genuinely surprised, I was actually very, very happy with the craftsmanship and the installation of this metal panel, so really, no complaints as an architect until Cameron called me and mentioned that, you know, the planter wasn't installed, and so that's something that we're obviously dealing with here. This is just a kind of close-up view that I took within the last month of that metal panel, so you see that the design intent was meant in that, met, excuse me, in that the brick is proud, the metal panel, which the seams are actually quite, quite nicely hidden, you know, sits back, and then the windows sit back beyond that, so there's a nice three-dimensional intent that was achieved on the facade. And then these are just some other images of the building as built, and what we're proposing here briefly is that our planter, and I'm going to just circle this so it's very clear, we're proposing now to put over here on the, on the left side of the door, and we're doing that for two reasons, first of all, the planter, as imagined, was actually on a lot line, and there was a little bit of a miscommunication or misunderstanding on my part, and I take full responsibility for that in terms of the location of that planter. Here, by adding it, it's a little bit smaller, but adding it where we have it, it actually sits back in a setback that we've provided for the, for the doorway of the building, the main entry of the building, which we think makes sense, and then you see a little plan of that planter, it'll be 6'2" by projecting about 30 inches. And I just want to show you what that looks like with respect to the plan, it is this area over here. I was teaching today, and so I'm all about the annotation on Zoom with students, and not that the board is students, I'm just showing you with the annotations, you know what I mean by that. So there's the planter there, here's our five-by-five tree grates in front of it that we're installing, and I think that this is a nice compromise, we're still getting the planter, obviously, the tree grates are required, and the building facade is executed as, as imagined. And then I will, I will basically conclude with a quick render of what that planter will actually look like and how we're imagining planting it. So that, that, that planter will sit at 30 inches from the, the inset of the facade, the entry sequence of the building, it will be clad in the metal panel, the same metal panel that we actually have up above, and you can see that up above for reference, and we think that it's, it's actually, you know, at the lot line, not encroaching the lot line, so it's a good solution to bring some green space to the front of the building as originally intended, slightly different configuration, and again, to refer back to the plan, we do have those five-by-five tree grates as well in keeping with the forestry standards and as discussed with planning staff. So that is my presentation, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Roth, do you have anybody else?
I, that's all, I just have Richard.
Right, um, does any questions from any members, any of the commissioners have any questions?
I, Commissioner Rothman has one question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Richard, from the angle of the rendering with the planter, it looks like it's kind of in front of and blocking the little doorbell security cameras, is that, is that, is that work, is that the way it's going to end up?
So, so, you know, this is a, thank you, thank you for that question, this is a, this is a kind of rendering, just showing some plan, we'll obviously trim any kind of planting back, that, that doorbell mechanism and security mechanism will be completely accessible and operable.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners? All right, Lindsey, does anybody have, public, anybody in the public have their hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised right now, but if anyone's here, you hand at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in, you would dial star nine, but again, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, give them a couple of seconds, nobody there, we'll close the public portion. Does anybody have any questions, staff, how about a staff report, please, Mr. Black?
Ah, yes, okay, so, planning staff just asked that the applicant agree to all of the conditions that were originally agreed upon for the original approval in 2018, and besides that, staff has no further comments.
Okay, is any, anybody on the, any commissioners have any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm going to see motion on the floor, please.
Amen.
I would like to make him.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Chuck, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm reminding you to go ahead, I don't like this.
Somebody please make a motion.
All right. Somebody.
Nora, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, a motion to approve with staff recommendations? Anybody seconding that?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Bacta?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Right. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Okay. Acting Vice Chair Shadid?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman McCormick?
Yes, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, everyone, be safe, be well.
Thank you.
With conditions.
Thank you, thank you.
Six, nothing approval. Okay, did you get a hold of Mr. Harrington?
Yes, he's going to move forward with six.
Okay, we're going to be hearing case Z20-073, 4349 Fabio Avenue, and 2009 Monticello Avenue. We're going to handle this as one case and move on to the second case?
Yes, I think we'll hear them both at once, and then we'll take separate votes on them.
Okay, so call the, call the order, both cases, Z20?
So I promoted Chuck Harrington and...
Vote on them separately.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Harrington, if you'd like to proceed?
Yes, if, I'm looking for our, oh, Lena's here, okay, great.
Mr. Harrington, so, so we, let's get the record straight for the moment, we're going to hear Z20-073 and Z20-074 together, it's the same property, and we'll take two separate votes. It is clear, you've, you've, you've given us notices on both of these cases, we've looked at both of the notices for both cases, and Bridget, I think you have them separately, so we're going to mark both of this packet for each case.
Okay, so for 073, it'll be A1, the notices, and for 074, it will be A2, since this will be in one booklet together.
Great. And Mr. Harrington, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I guess we can proceed.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for hearing them both together because the applications are, are related. For the benefit of some of the board members that were not at the presentation of really the same project about two years ago. This property was subdivided a little over two years ago, in August of 2018, and we had a site plan approval at that time as well. Tonight, we are presenting it as a new application for site plan for a number of reasons, one of which is, you know, two years have gone by, where, where it is, it is, some of the changes are substantial enough, we think, to have a new application, it also would permit the clock to restart, to start construction on the two years. And I also note that the subdivision before you is a major subdivision, only because the lots were recently subdivided within the last five years, so that's, that's per the ordinance, it now is defined as a major subdivision. So what was approved two years ago was a 10-story building with 92 residential units, and 55% of the units are affordable units, so 50 of the 92 units are affordable housing units. And in this instance, the affordability percentages is 50 to 60% AMI, so it's, it's a pretty, you know, strong affordable unit project here, not only in percentages, but also in percentage of units, but also in the income levels. So that was a 10-story building two years ago, tonight's presentation is a nine-story building, and one of the substantial changes is we are moving the building from the rear lot line up to the front lot line. So when this was presented and approved in 2018, it involved the demolition of the former gymnasium building that was attached to the former YMCA that fronts on Bergen Avenue, also a building that was used, is referred to as the racquetball building. Those two buildings are still going to be demolished as part of this proposal, but the former pool building, if you will, which was part of the project two years ago, it was actually incorporated into the, the new building, that's going to be a standalone building now, so it's kind of a little bit of unique feature here, so that in the back, that's going to be programmed differently, we're, we're asking the board to permit kind of a mix of uses there, which we propose the community space, retail, retail cafe, and maybe a small restaurant or office space, so that's something that, that we think will not only be a benefit to the immediate project, but also to the community at large. So, yeah, the project is, we are proposing another subdivision, the reason behind that is to separate this into phases, the, the proposed residential building is going to be funded through low-income housing tax credits, so the investor, it's really for financing purposes, the investor wants to separate out that lot for the main building, so we're doing that really for the, you know, for the project financing purposes, and then the front building would start, you know, if approved, it would start first, and then the, this, the renovation of the pool building would start second, and either after it or simultaneously. In that regard, in order, you know, we think the, the restoration of the pool building is, is a very prominent part of this application, its historic preservation, so in order to ensure that, that, you know, one is not built without the other, we, we discussed with planning about, prior to any, any CO for the front building, if the back, the pool restoration is not complete, we would post a bond for the amount of the, the, the construction left, so that is absolutely going to be completed. There'll also be, as part of the subdivision, there'll be cross easements between the two new lots, so they will, they will function as one project, because the, the parking now will, will be behind the building, it's no longer surface parking in front of the building along Fairview, so we're also eliminating the prior curb cuts that were along Fairview Avenue, so we, we think the project's better because it's, you know, from, from an urban standpoint, a development standpoint, your standpoint, you're bringing the building up to the streetscape, you're not having this, this vast surface parking lot sitting in front of the building. So with that said, I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know, the background of it, I know Commissioner McCormick and Commissioner Rothman were present at that, that presentation, but I wanted to give that kind of overview for the rest of the, the board, so that they kind of see, see this in context as to, you know, where we're coming from, so we're really amending that prior approval, but it's a, it is, it is a new application for the reasons I stated, and we're excited about it, the applicant is a, is a affordable housing developer, if you will, they're presently also in the process of rehabilitating the former YMCA building at 654 Bergen Avenue. That, that is not part of this application, but I have been before the historic board, the Historic Preservation Commission in the last three months, and we have gotten approval to renovate the outside of that as well as the interior, so this, you know, they're vested in this, this is, this is, you know, they're, they're big stakeholders here, and with that, in that regard too, this project was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission as well, because it is in the, the Lincoln Park, I forget the, let's just call it the Lincoln Park Historic District.
District.
Yes, so, so that, we were required to go before the commission, and we did get a, receive a certificate of appropriateness for that as well. So this, this property is, it's located within that district, it's also located within the R1 district, and part, a portion which is used as just a drive aisle and some parking is located within the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan that, that opens up to Monticello Avenue, so similar to, to the prior approval or presentation. So now, after that long-winded history, you're like, boy, he's making this a long agenda. I have my witnesses tonight, and my engineer who will walk you through the, the site and the subdivision, and also my architect and Mr. Colling will follow up with the requested variances, so with this...
Mr. Harrington, excuse me, they'll be discussing everything for both, both cases, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Lena, you're muted, there you go.
I'm ready.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state and spell your full legal name?
Lena Bellorda Barone, that's J-E-L-E-N-A, last name B as in boy, A-L-O-R-D-A hyphen B as in boy, A-R-O-N-E.
Tell your name again for me, but leave out the B as in boy, I'm, I launched.
So start with the last one or the first one, too?
Your last name.
B-A-L-O-R-D-A hyphen B-A-R-O-N-E.
Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Bellardo Barone has been qualified in the past by this board, she was actually the project architect, architect, engineer on the first approval, so I'd offer her again in that regard.
Okay, is she, is she still, her license?
Yes, and my license is current, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, we accept your qualifications.
I would like to share my screen with the board.
Go ahead.
Um, what I'm showing... Um, what I'm showing is an exhibit titled Fairview Heights, an exhibit prepared by Mazer Consulting dated November fourth, twenty twenty. It's an aerial photograph with the proposed development rendered and superimposed on top of it. Just for orientation purposes, the site is located on lots eight point oh one and thirteen and block sixteen seven oh three. It consists of just slightly less than one acre. It is bound by Monticello Avenue, Fairview Avenue, Bergen View Development that Mr. Harrington mentioned, and also adjoining residential developments. So as we had heard before, the site is currently a vacant former YMCA athletic building, and it has two parking lots. Both parking lots are accessible, one off of Monticello Avenue and one off of Fairview Avenue currently. Lot eight point oh one is the majority of the site and it's located in the R one zone where multifamily developments are not permitted. Lot thirteen is the narrow lot that fronts on Monticello Avenue and is in the Jackson Hill Redevelopment Zone District. We are proposing a subdivision of the two properties for financing purposes, as was noted, to separate the two buildings. I hope you can see I'm outlining the line where the subdivision is proposed to separate the pool building from the apartment building. So we're creating lots eight point oh two and eight point oh three. Eight point oh two is going to consist of the pool building and will be merged with lot thirteen and front on Monticello Avenue. And proposed lot eight point oh three will consist of the remaining portion. It will house the apartment building and the parking lot. Again, we're in front of you because multifamily uses are not permitted in the R one district. The new nine-story building is in that is not complying with the uses. As was noted before, we are going to maintain the existing pool building that will be converted to a either a community building or some type of flex space that the community can benefit from. The total project is just under one acre of development and also one acre of disturbance. The majority of the existing building will be demolished with the exception of the pool building. The proposed pool building that is to remain has a footprint of about five thousand four hundred forty-three square feet. And the new nine-story residential building has a footprint of approximately twelve thousand three hundred fifty-one square feet. Out of those ninety-two residential units, we are proposing a mix of nineteen studios, thirty-two one bedrooms, thirty-two two bedrooms, and nine three bedrooms. The density of this development is hundred forty-nine dwelling units per acre. I do want to note that in the existing condition, the building that will be demolished has currently a zero setback for the front yard, rear yard, and side yard. In the proposed conditions, the pool building will actually have a more than adequate front yard setback. The side yard setback will be maintained. And the rear yard setback will be similar as there will be a new subdivision line there. The proposed residential building will meet the five-foot front yard setback requirement from Fairview Avenue. It will have a one-foot side yard setback to the west, to the east, and a larger setback to the west. Those are all going to be requirements that are met. As far as pedestrian access, there will be direct pedestrian access into the new building off of Fairview. There will be also pedestrian access from Monticello Avenue through to the parking lot. Vehicular access is proposed only from Monticello Avenue. Currently, we have forty-four spaces on the site. We are going to propose thirty-seven spaces, so a loss of seven parking spaces. We also just want to note that we do need a de minimis exception from the residential site improvement standards because the drive aisle is twenty-two feet wide in certain portions where twenty-four feet is required. And the sidewalk is also five feet in certain areas where six feet is required. Again, we believe that this is just a minor deviation from the standards. As far as refusés and recyclables for the proposed apartment building, they're going to be stored within a trash and compactor room inside the building. And you will hear more about that from the architect. But the maintenance staff will wheel it out at pickup day through the street. We are proposing a refuse enclosure and a recyclables enclosure in the rear near the parking lot. That enclosure will house the refusés and recyclables for the adjacent Bergen View Development. There is a path that is proposed on the side of the new apartment building so that the trash can be handled by the maintenance staff and brought out for pickup. Again, we will coordinate that with the appropriate staff and address any of their comments that they may have. To service these two buildings, utility connections, new utility connections are proposed off both Monticello Avenue and Fairview. We are proposing an underground stormwater detention basin to manage the stormwater runoff. This basin is going to be connected to an existing sewer on Monticello Avenue. And the stormwater management meets the residential site improvements, the state and the city requirements for stormwater management. We are proposing a new landscape and lighting package for the site as it will be reconfigured. We are proposing new street fixtures that meet the city standard and onsite fixtures of a very similar type that will be located throughout the site in order to provide adequate lighting. We are proposing landscaping on the site that's consistent with the city forestry guidelines. We are proposing to plant the landscape islands with city-tolerant species of low growth within the parking lot, a mix of shrubs, annuals, perennials, and grasses. All plantings are semi-shade and dense shade tolerant. We are proposing to remove one existing street tree on Fairview Avenue and replace them with four new street trees. This existing tree has many broken and dead branches, and it's actually leaning towards the street. So it creates a safety hazard for pedestrians and vehicles. So we feel that it's better for that tree to be replaced. And again, we will work with your staff to address any of the comments that they raise in terms of landscape and lighting. So in summary, you could see that we are proposing to improve an existing property that is currently underutilized. As Mr. Harrington said, we are providing housing that is also going to be fifty-five percent affordable. And we are also maintaining the existing pool building to preserve the historic aspects of this property. So that summarizes my direct testimony. If anybody has any questions.
I think we'll hold all questions to all everybody's heard.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to move move on to our architect, Anthony DiCosta.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your full legal name for the record?
Anthony DiCosta the third, last name D apostrophe capital A G O S T A.
Thank you.
And Mr. DiCosta has been qualified before Jersey City boards in the past and asked that he be accepted again in that regard.
Okay, as as long as his license is still standing in good faith?
Sure is.
Okay, we accept your qualifications, so thank you.
Great. May I control the screen?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you for the introduction, both Chuck and Lena. I think I won't spend a terrible amount of time describing the site characteristics. I think we've oriented ourselves enough. But to to share what we have before you, the the exhibit I have on the screen is that which we've shared previously, most recently updated ten nineteen twenty drawings prepared by our office, Inglais Architecture and Engineering, six thirty-two Pompton Avenue, Cedar Grove, New Jersey. As as both Chuck and Lena have explained, the project now exists as a nine-story building closest to to Fairview Ave with a slight setback for a planting bed and a minimal side yard setback to our east and a larger setback to our west. Parking at the rear and the preserved pool building that will be standalone from the project as a whole. I'll walk you through the floor plans quickly and then describe the material palette at the elevation and then, of course, discuss the rendering. So what we have before you is a ground floor plan that has both our nine-story building at the bottom of the screen and the aforementioned pool building towards the top of the screen. Well, the purpose of this presentation will focus mostly on the nine-story building. The ground floor is populated by four residential units that front both Fairview and the parking area to the east. And the western portion of the building is the more utilitarian portion of the building where we're providing the traditional uses uses you would see in a residential building such as management and play area in addition to bike storage and laundry facilities for the 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 building, as well as utility spaces. The building will, of course, be fully sprinkled. And as it is an elevator building, the entire building will also be fully adaptable, meaning all units in the building be fully accessible and adapted or have the ability to be adapted should they require. The building is served by two centrally located elevators off of our lobby here, as well as two egress stairs at either end of the building. Those vertical circulation elements feed a double-loaded corridor at the ground floor and carry their way up through the upper floors. At the second floor, more of the same. Residential units now populate the entire floor plate. That floor plate is roughly twelve thousand three hundred fifty square feet. And again, we're it's a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three-bedroom units. They're sprinkled about the project, as mentioned previously. Fifty percent of fifty units of this building will be affordable units. We're not making a a a strong distinction between those units from a design perspective. All units will be treated nearly identically in terms of a general use, layout, and and a square footage. We have units that range from a studio from five hundred square feet to four five hundred fifty square feet, one bedrooms from six hundred eighty to seven hundred forty square feet. These are round numbers. Two bedrooms from nine hundred five to twelve hundred square feet and three bedrooms from thirteen twenty to thirteen fifty square feet. So obviously, as there's a wide array of unit types here, those units have a varying degree of size, but all will be treated very similarly. The building will be served by a trash chute at this end of the building that will obviously communicate with the compactor at the ground floor. That compactor will exit directly onto Fairview. We will meet the city's requirement for onsite trash staging and provide the requisite number of storage units in that trash room. As far as the floors, three through seven, they are nearly identical or they are identical to one another. Again, the those floor plates are populated by thirteen apartments, all fed by this double-loaded corridor. As we move our way to the eighth floor, the units vary just ever so slightly as these units are are a bit higher and their their square footage changes slightly. At the ninth floor, we're providing an amenity space, community room, that fronts Fairview in in hopes of mitigating the the bulk of the building on the street frontage. We've pulled this story back a little over ten feet to provide to provide a bit of a hidden floor, if you will. Mechanical systems won't be visible from the street frontage. The intention is any mechanical system that may be visible will be at the rear, if at all. The ninth floor is fed by a single elevator at this point. The two stairs will will feed a community space that's roughly seventeen hundred square feet, an outdoor area that is just over eleven hundred square feet, and a gym for the building around nine hundred square feet. At the community building or the the pool building, restoration is is very similar to those that you've seen previously and has been fortunately approved by your your landmarks committee. We won't spend too much time here, but a general layout here is a communal space. As the tenant is is not secured at this point, this design may slight slightly change, but in general, we're populating this and scheduling it for to be a a communal space. From an elevation standpoint, again, we are at nine stories. The general building height is in the ninety-nine to a hundred linear feet range. The the site tapers slightly as going west to east in this direction. But in general, we can call this about a hundred feet from grade. The material palette here is one that we tried to slightly improve upon the previous approval, which included a fair amount of cast stone, brick, two types of brick, actually, and fiber cement panel for a panelized system on the less visible facades. We're anchoring the building here with cast stone and and bringing that up two stories to maintain a human scale at this level. As as Chuck mentioned earlier, the idea was to provide an active street frontage here. So we're providing a fair amount of fenestration at this level, a good planting bed to separate those units that front Fairview Ave, the Fairview sidewalk and the building itself, and a and a wide canopy to provide signifying entry to to our building centralized to the middle of our facade. The side facade, our eastern side facade, is one that wraps back with a similar material palette and then changes slightly to a panelized system that then repeats itself towards the rear of our property where brick is utilized a little less and we're relying a little bit more on a panelized system. Again, there, it's more of ease of construction. And again, as these facades are very much less visible, the priority is to to focus on the primary facade along Fairview. And and that was the intention that we we feel we've executed. The western facade, which is a few feet away from our adjacent lot line, has the ability to populate with a few windows, so we've done that. Again, that that material transition occurs once again where brick transitions to fiber cement as it wraps the building. As we all know, a picture says a thousand words. This is a a graphical representation rendering of our design intent. As mentioned, we're implementing a good base to the building, a a cast stone base, two stories, and then utilizing two different brick types and brick color and finish on the upper stories. We've we've broken the facade a bit and tied it back to our original design intent, which which echoes some of the design features that you've seen previously at the previous approval and just tweaked for this updated approach. Unless there are are particular questions, that concludes my presentation.
And Mr. Acosta, we're going to hold all questions to the end of the presentation.
Sure.
Anthony, could you touch upon the pool building a little bit?
Sure. So the pool building in its existing state is one that has been laid vacant for a bit. And as as it was part of the YMCA, has sort of been segregated as that renovation has taken place at the Bergen View Building. This building is 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 from a design standpoint, preserves really well or or hanging on pretty well on the interior. As you'll see, there's a fair amount of beautiful tile work throughout the the interior of this space. The exterior of the building is is very utilitarian, that if there was no real intention for this building to be visible from the street. Before, the the Fairview frontage was the parking lot that it is today, which we are now proposing nine-story building to be positioned on. It was a series of row homes and the same on Monticello. So there was no real vision back towards the building. So as we've worked with your landmarks committee, the focus here is preserving the interior of the the pool building. And the pool building is one that we're 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 trying to freshen a bit, but maintain its historical integrity. So we'll be replacing windows, providing new flooring, building a new floor over the pool, but not infilling it for the historic, the landmarks team's request. And the general look of the building today versus what it had looked And the general look of the building today versus what it had looked like. Here is, as you can see, is, is maintained pretty well. We've been fortunate that this building has been preserved in a pretty good state. But for a, a use perspective, a pool doesn't fit well on, on today's programmatic needs. So what we've presented and been approved by your landmarks team is to, to have this pool building operate as a communal space. Generally, right now, we're proposing it for it to be sort of an open area. This infill area was intended to be representative of what was, was the pool's perimeter. So you have this dark banding of tile around what was the edge of the pool. And then this tile towards the middle to simulate and, and complement what, what was at one point a body of water. This same room from a different perspective, looking back from the previous vantage point. Allows us to kind of see what the, the space looks like during daytime and, and see it as functioning. For, for the, the community, the residents of the building, hopefully going forward.
And that's the interior there because of its expansive layout. That's part of the reason we're, we're requesting. Some flexibility on potential uses there for possible, you know, community space, number one. A cafe, restaurant or retailer office, some kind of mix because we see this, you know, almost like a blank slate. To, to try to integrate some, some uses that will benefit the immediate community.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now, I know we're going to hold questions, so I'm going to move. Anthony, if you have anything else to, to add?
That's it.
Okay. So I move on to Mr. Colling.
What happened?
There he is. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? You're muted Ed.
And I believe Mr. Collins went through the board many times. Mr. Collins, you're still in good status with your license and all?
Yes, my, my, my license is current and paid to date and, and yes, I.
Okay. Accepted as usual. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
And I do accept the fact that I'm under oath at this point.
Thank you.
I'll just jump right into the, the, the variance testimony because I know you, as usual, you have a very full schedule. First I'll ju- I'll jump into the multifamily use that, that we're requesting a use variance from. And not going to go into too much of the detail because it's already been presented very well. But I think that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use. First, it's a very, very large site. Taken in total, it's nearly an acre. Also, it's, has good access to goods and services. Monticello Avenue was a traditional commercial street. And the hope is that it will continue to revitalize under the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. And so that will provide. Good access to goods and services, which is something that a multifamily building should be in proximity to. It also has proximity to public transportation. There are bus lines on the, on Bergen Avenue. As well as on Monticello Avenue that provides service to Journal Square and then to downtown and further. So that shows some of the particular suitability. I'd also point out that there's other multifamilies in the area, especially along Bergen Avenue. In fact, there's an R three zone there, which allows for buildings up to eight stories. So this type of development would not be out of character with other buildings in the, in the area. It's also some other existing buildings. This, this, the larger building towards Bergen Avenue, of course, was the YMCA. Couple of blocks north, there's a former YWCA, which is an eleven-story building and currently has some residential uses in it. So it's not really out of character and therefore adds to that suitability. Looking at the public benefit, obviously the fifty affordable housing units is a great benefit. It's fifty-five percent. This is significantly more than what you would typically find even in a generous percentage of affordable housing where you might find twenty percent say affordable. So this goes to something I would call inherently, inherently beneficial in this, this regard. Also, I'd point out that this was previously approved and that building was ten stories and was pushed to the back of the lot as. Mr. Harrington had mentioned. This is a much better design. It's, it faces the street. It provides for more vitality on the street. It provides for eyes on the street, which is, which is a great benefit to public, public safety. And the city really does not encourage to have towers set in a parking lot, pushed back from the street. It really doesn't add anything to the aesthetics. It's very unsightly, doesn't add to the urban feel of an area. So this again is a much better approach to design. If we shift now to the height variance for this building, a lot of the same comments I made support the height variance. The size of the lot, the proximity to other multifamilies, the proximity to the R three zone, which allows for buildings of similar height. So this wouldn't be out of character. I do not think that it would result in a substantial detriment to the intent of the zone plan or the public good. Because you'll find other buildings of similar charac- character in the area and permitted in fact, in the area. So I think that the height bearings can also be approved because of the site's ability to support the additional height without. Detriment to the public good. I think the architecture also supports this to a, a great degree. As the architect pointed out, the ninth story is set back considerably. It's not really part of the density of this, of the site. It's more amenity space and it's pushed back. Also, the way the architecture breaks the upper floors from the lower floors, the introduction of the brick versus the gray above it. Makes the building read a little bit lower and I think that that also is a mitigating factor to the additional height being requested. The, if you look at some of the bulk standards, they're really subsumed in the experience. Obviously you can apply the same bulk standards for, that are applicable to a one and two family home to this, to this, to a building of this type. So I think they are all subsumed within the, the, the use variance. And can be granted under the C two where the benefits outweigh the detriments. Again, you have a substantial benefit here. Really inherently beneficial type of use in the affordable housing alone. And that, that really also supports the, the two A criteria that are purposes of the act. Where this granting of this approval would be a municipal action that would guide the appropriate use and development of the land. And in, in a manner which will promote the public safety, health, health and welfare of the, of the community. The public, again, affordable housing goes right to that point. I think also we're, we're encouraging or providing sufficient space in an appropriate location. And this is a very large lot, nearly, nearly an acre. It's in an appropriate location given proximity to the. Community, the commercial services and public transportation. So that's power, some paragraph two G. It promotes a desirable visual environment. Today, this parcel is, is a significant amount of it is surface parking, which is visible from. Fairview Avenue and that's really unsightly. This building will, will address that significantly. And then we also are promoting the conservation of historic sites. As the architect mentioned, the HPC has already approved this project. And you saw for yourself how beautiful that pool building is on the interior. So I think that, that we, we addressed that as well. Now, if we turn to the, to the pool building itself, we're also looking for a use variance for the use of that. And while it really lends itself to, to community use and that's the, the primary goal is to do that so that it can be. The interior can be available to people to come in and to, to, to see that, that space and to be able to enjoy it. We also want the flexibility to be able to add maybe a small amount of office space. Perhaps some ancillary retail space in there. Cafe, restaurant type of use because the more you activate that space, the greater the use will be. And then, and also I think that lends itself to the maintenance of the space. And, and so I think that being able to preserve the space and be able to have it open for, for more users. It's really important for, to have that flexibility in the use of spaces. I don't see any detriment in allowing that. These, this space will be accessible from Monticello Avenue. Monticello Avenue was traditional commercial space. This will sort of complement that commercial revitalization of Monticello Avenue. And really meet the intent of what the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan is. So I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare or to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or to the. A Jackson Hill redevelopment plan itself. The site is particularly, that building is particularly well suited for these types of uses. Because of the, of its, its size, because of its, it's just a wonderful style of that, of that space. So I think that, that goes to a particular suitability. So I think that the, the variances can be, can be granted pursuant to the, the V one criteria for the use, the use variances that we've had. The D six criteria for the height variance and the bulk variance is under C two. And that would include the, the aisle width situation, twenty-two feet as the engineer has mentioned is, is more than sufficient for. It is only two feet deficient from the, the site improvement standards. So I don't see any detriment to, to that, that minor deviation as well.
Anything further, Mr. Colling?
No, that's it.
Okay. And just for the record, I wanted to clarify something and I may have heard, maybe I wasn't paying attention totally, but I. I thought we had stated earlier incorrectly that it, that the proposed density is a hundred and forty-five units an acre. It's actually about ninety-six units an acre because as Mr. Colling pointed out, this, this total site is, is approximate. It's, it's just about an acre. It's still a little under the forty-three, five, sixty of square feet. So it's about ninety-six units an acre. I, I, I think that's important as well.
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct, Mr. Harrington. I was looking at that myself. I think if you took only the, the subdivided lot. The building sits on, it might be the other number that you had mentioned, but in, if we're practical terms. The, the site functions as one site. The subdivision is simply a line on, on a piece of paper, but anybody using this site. It's going to feel like it's one site, it's one development and therefore you have to look at the, like, look at it in its totality.
Okay, Mr. Harrington is.
That completes our.
All your witnesses?
Yes, yes, it does.
All right. All right. Does anybody, any commissioners have any questions for the, Mr. Harrington or his witnesses?
I do, but I'd like to hear from staff first.
The staff, it comes after the questions first, then we ask staff.
Okay. I don't like this project. First of all, on the community space, what this city needs is affordable stuff for kids to do. Not a bunch of tables where people might gather, have a coffee and sit and be on their computer all day. I, I'm against any commercial use of that space. No one should have to pay to use that space to go in. No one needs to buy clothing in that place. You need something for kids to do that's affordable and free and managed. And how are you going to keep people from just, who's going to manage that twenty-four seven? Are you going to have people sitting out there? Now that we have legal marijuana, you're going to have people sitting out there listening to their boom boxes, smoking dope. And, and you know, at two AM in the morning, I mean, what's, what's the plan for this? It would be nice to keep it as a swimming pool because this. Now, it's nice to have public pools, but I don't, I don't see, I'd like to hear more about a real plan about this thing. What uses, I mean, you chose that rendering. You could have chose a rendering to show a basketball court or ping pong tables or classrooms. So I'm just going with what you showed, but I'm not, I'm not feeling that you're really doing anything for the community. With your definition of their community space.
Well, I, I think Commissioner Rosman, what we're doing, we're proposing is to, to renovate and restore this space. It's not, we're not proposing a pool because there's, it's my understanding is a huge crack in it. That, that just doesn't lend to, to trying to restore it as a use as a pool. The idea here really is, is, is a community space and have these, these additional potential uses integrated. And that, that can help maintain and restore, maintain, maintain this building because it's going to need maintenance, you know, over, over time. So it, it is a, you know, a community space that the people in the, in the immediate community, nobody's going to have to pay to get in here. It's, it's not. You know, if you have a little retail, we, I think we envision it as, as almost like a, not a, not an eatily, but you, you walk into a building, you know, but. And you have, you know, little components here. You got to, you know, community uses at night or, and maybe you have, you know, a little. Coffee area over there that they sell some coffee. Maybe, maybe people in the community go in there and sit, you know, and, and, and do their homework or meet, you know, in groups there. That's, you know, we're not, we're not looking to, to reprogram it as an athletic community facility. That kind of a background to the city had, the city was an owner, I believe of this, you know, some time ago. And they had an opportunity to go in and do things like this as well. But I think the cost of it is, was too much and they, you know, that's how my, my client was, wanted to work with them on that and it didn't happen, but. So in this instance, that's, you know, the programming here, I understand what you're saying and you, you do need, you do need all of that. But I don't think that this space right here is gonna, being reprogrammed as a basketball court is, is, is not, is not the, the, you know, the. The, you know.
I'm not, I'm not promoting it as anything, but you know, if this building needs so much work, you can't do the pool and it's going to need up this upkeep. What was the point of even trying to keep this building? Well, maintain it. Was there some trade-offs? You could get the, the height to do the, the housing part?
No, I mean, the historic, in order to demolish any building in a historic district, you need to, to apply to the historic preservation commission. You, you can't just take it down. And the, in, in our discussions with the historic preservation officer in the city and, and the historic preservation committee. They saw that this, because as you saw the photos here, there was a lot of historical resources here that can be saved. They didn't think it was appropriate to demolish it. So in, in sure, we had to renovate it and, and work it into the project. The easy thing would have been to demolish it if you were allowed to do it. The gymnasium was in very rough shape. So that building is coming down and the racquetball building wasn't, wasn't really historical at all. But this one, as you saw from the photos, there's, there's some, some really nice resources here that we're trying to save. So. That is, you know, it's, it's going to be a great element, but it's going to be a costly element as part of this as well. So, you know, we're just asking, you know, for the, kind of the, the mix, a little bit of a menu to help finance that as well. Cause it's, you know, it's going to be costly.
No, no, I, I, I have a fair understanding of how financing of affordable housing works. Let me ask you a practical question because now that you've moved the building up to Fairview. And you have a, a little bit narrower driveway and it's also on an angle and it's off, also off of a. What around here would be called the sort of a main street. I'm just talking during the process of construction, what kind of disturbance is it going to be both to monitor traffic on Monticello and on Fairview? And I'm asking because I live on Clermont. And between, on Clermont, between West Side and Mallory, there's a building, a huge building going up. That's taking up about three quarters of the block and Mallory has been blocked off for, for months. Which is a real big headache trying to get around with all these one-way streets. And I'm just wondering how you're going to be getting all this, these big equipment in, off of Monticello. Day in and day out, or just blocking up Fairview. I'm just curious to know from a disruption point of view, how this, how this is going to play out during the construction period.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
So the, the driveway access from Monticello is, is as you know, an existing one. And I think will actually be used to our advantage so as not to terribly disrupt the neighborhood. I think given the, the site in general and the, the, the blank space between the pool building and our building. Staging is actually in our favor. As you probably know, some of these infill projects are very difficult to stage when there's little to no. Property to operate on. In our case, that space between the pool building and our proposed building, residential building. Probably provides enough space for us to, to crane and, and, and stage material onsite. As opposed to, you know, shutting down the, the street as frequent as maybe some other construction projects maybe elsewhere in the city.
Thank you.
Just to add to, Anthony, also there's that room between the Bergenview building and the pool building. So we have also a lot of room onsite for material storage and we can work our way backwards from Fairview to the rear.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much on that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any, any other commissioners have any other questions for the witnesses or Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted clarity. You said there will be fifty units that will be affordable. Out of, out of the ninety-six.
And nine, out of the ninety-two.
Ninety-two. Okay.
And the income levels would be between fifty to sixty percent of AMI.
All right. All right, Lindsay, uh, do we have any public participation, Lindsay?
Yeah, I do see a hand raised, but before we get to that person, I have two, um, if you have a question or a comment, you would click raise hand at the bottom of your screen or you would dial star nine if you're calling in. Um, and I think typically we allot three minutes per person.
Mr. Rothman, are you ready for the timekeeping?
I'm so ready.
All right. So we only have, we only have two hand raised, hands raised. Uh, so I'm no particular order. I'm going to unmute Jim at eighty-eight Jewett. Sorry about that. Uh, Jim at eighty-eight Jewett, I'm going to unmute you. Uh, please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Okay. Hi, uh, Jim, uh, James Kalbach, K A L B A C H. I live at eighty-eight Jewett Avenue, which is the north block of Jewett Avenue directly behind the pool. It's about forty feet away from where I'm talking right now.
Okay, Mr. Kalbach, uh, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, my wife and I moved to this area from downtown because we, we like the historic, uh, nature of this area and we would like to speak. Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Kalbach, just so you know, there'll be a time limit of three minutes and you will be notified at one minute.
No, notified with thirty seconds left.
Okay.
Thirty seconds, okay.
Okay, thank you.
We, we moved to this area because we like the historic nature of it and we want to see, uh, this area flourish. We're all for this project and we welcome our new neighbors. We prefer this plan to the one that was proposed earlier. That setting that building apart is, is a good thing. Um, our concern is actually around the pool area and some of the questions that came up, what it's actually going to be used for. Because it is adjacent, directly adjacent to our property, um, that actually, uh, using it for sports would be, uh, not preferable to us because of sound, noise and light. So my, the first question I have is how do we learn more about what this space is going to be used for? And then the second question is in the architectural plans and the plans for the development, can we foresee soundproofing and lightproofing for privacy and also security? I know there's a door there right now, for instance. So the, the concern I have is around that pool building and what the effect that's going to have on our property and our neighbors right, right here as well, too. Um, we're, we love the pool building and we love what you did with it and we love preserving that.
I, I think the, the short answer on, on the use of the community building is I believe my, my client would be working with the community uh, and the respective community, uh, groups to try to find a use that, that works not only for the project, but also the community and, uh, the residential building, uh, above. They, they would have the same concerns. We don't, we don't want a use that's going to interfere or be objectionable to the people living, uh, in the building, uh, that fronts on, on Fairview Avenue. Uh, as far as the lighting, uh, I mean, Anthony can jump in or, or Lena, but, uh, the lighting will be, uh, within, there will be lighting, uh, within the, the parking lot and by there, but it will not be, um, it, it will be positioned so it will not be flowing, uh, over into other areas.
We do have house side shields for the lighting so that we will not be, uh, spilling over onto the residential.
My concern was the light out of the backside of the pool, that right now there are four windows and they're completely boarded up. When that's going to be lit up, that'll light up our backyards and there'll be sound that can potentially come through those windows as well.
So you mean within from the building?
The south side of the building, yes.
Anthony, you want to.
Those windows will be lit up and they, the potentially bleed sound.
Yeah, uh, maybe there's a, a potential that we can integrate some kind of, uh, night shield. Obviously during the day, you're not dealing with the same conditions at, at night. Um, and, and maybe, um, that side of the building, subject to historic approval, uh, would allow us to provide some kind of, um, both light and sound, um, muffling device. It's unlikely that that would be interior to the building because it alters the, obviously the, the precious portion of the building. But given the utilitarian nation, uh, utilitarian, um, existing conditions of the exterior, there's a potential that we could do something on the exterior, but, um, it's, it's not something that I believe anybody here can make a call on right now. Given the, uh, historic oversight on the site.
Okay. How can I stay involved in the use of the building and these measures that we just talked about? Where can I, who can I get in contact with? And to help, I, I'm willing to help out too. So, um, I would like to stay in touch.
You could, Mr. Kalbach, you could contact me, uh, you, you, I'm sure you got my, my notice letter. Uh, and I can put you in contact with my client directly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalbach. Lindsay, next.
The next person I'm going to mute you, uh, Diana Vasquez. I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Diana Vasquez. I am at twenty-five Reed Street.
And Ms. Vasquez, uh, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes.
And state and spell your full name and provide your address.
Uh, Diana Vasquez, D I A N A V A S Q U E Z, twenty-five Reed Street.
Thank you.
Okay. So I live on the other side of Fairview. So that is my backyard. And, um, there are, if I'm correct, this is the same, uh, owner as the Bergen View Apartments, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So is this going to be better managed? Because the Bergen View Building now and Fairview Avenue in general are very problematic streets. This is where we have tons of drugs. I mean, it's, there's also a soup kitchen there, but it's just, it's, it's very uncomfortable walking around that street. And it's during the day where the drug use is out in the open. So is this going to be managed in that same way? That would be my first question. Uh, because no one's paying attention to Bergen View. And my second question is the parking to the amount of units doesn't make any sense. There are tons of new developments that have been approved on Monticello that have zero parking and people just keep on bringing their cars. They just closed down on the corner of Reed and Bergen. Uh, and they just did it last week. I don't know why they would do this for the winter, but they just closed down, uh, Bergen Avenue. So you can't even turn right on Bergen anymore. So you have to use, uh, Fairview to get out of here now. There's no other way of getting out. So the traffic is becoming crazy and now parking is becoming an issue. And then my third thing is, um, like the gentleman said before, the use of the community space as more retail, I mean, Monticello Avenue has tons of retail that needs to be revitalized. That needs new businesses coming in. That parking lot is currently where all the children in the community play. If you walk there in the evening after school, that's where they ride their bikes. That's where they're playing basketball because there is nowhere for the children in the community to play. The basketball court down the street on Monticello, that's occupied by homeless people. So there's like issues here with the homeless population and then there's nothing being done for the children in the community. So what about that?
Well, I guess your first question is the, uh, on the, uh, management.
Man, on the management.
Yeah, Bergen View and this, yeah, I mean, it is the, the, my client has, has been making, um, substantial investments here. We, we did get this approved two years ago. The intent was to, to try to move forward at that time, uh, for a number of reasons. It got, it got stalled primarily because of financing, uh, and, and, uh, grants to, to support the project. But, uh, it, that not only affected this project, but also the Bergen, uh, Bergen Avenue project, which now they're, they're in the process of, hopefully closing a loan in the next couple of weeks to, to start, uh, all the renovations there. So they, they are invested in, 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 uh, turning, turning this around and making it, you know, a, a huge asset, uh, to, to the community. And if you have more people there, uh, you know, you have more eyes on the street, you got more people walking. So I think it will create a better situation.
So, so is there going to be security? Is there going to be doorman? Is there going to be cameras or is it just going to be a windfall like it is now?
All right. Anthony, so you're shaking your head there. You know that answer?
Sure. Yes. So the, the building will have, uh, a leasing office and marketing office, uh, right at the, the street frontage. So that space will sort of be active, um, at, at all times. Um, the entire property will be cammered. The, the access points, both at Monticello and along our alleyway, uh, between the existing Bergen View building and our proposed building will have cameras and will be lit. Um, so it's not going to be sort of this dark, uh, 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 area where we're, people can congregate. As the, the, the ownership team owns both buildings, uh, and clearly are, are, are investing in the two buildings that exist today and, and are hopeful approval for this larger building. Their investment is, uh, their intention is to protect their investment. So, um, they're, they're obviously, uh, considered of their neighbors and, and they'll, they'll do their best to secure the property, uh, and make sure it's safe and, and adequately lit.
Okay. And in, uh, just to touch upon your other comments, questions, uh, with regards to the parking, we believe, we believe that's, that's adequate, um, you know, for the proposed use. We, we are, um, you know, maximizing, we believe what we can do on, on the, uh, uh, on the surface parking, um, considering the renovation of the pool building as well as the existing building. It's not a project that you would really consider going, you know, below grade or, or creating a, a parking structure. I think that would be cost prohibitive, um, but we.
It's easy one second. So everything is cost prohibitive, but then the residents that live here have to live with the consequences of the prohibition of the cost. So everyone wants to come in and make money off the developments, but they don't want to spend what really needs to be done so that the community can live in peace. And I'm for all for the project. Hey, affordable housing, that's great. But there should be some consideration with what happens with parking. It, people don't stop buying cars because there's no parking lot. They don't.
Okay.
So why not build eleven floors and make one of parking?
Well, no, it's.
I, I, I think, I think from, from an, from an urban design standpoint, um, I, I think the last thing you want is to have that, that existing parking lot now be sort of a self-contained parking lot. And having, uh, one, your, your ground floor, uh, parking facing the street, lights going out into your neighbors. Um, and, uh, increasing the height of the building is something we're not looking at, too, of course. Uh, and, uh, activating that ground floor with actual humans as opposed to cars is probably a better use, I would think.
All right.
No.
You're fine. I got, go ahead, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
Mr. Rothman, I think, was that time up or?
Well, when there's, when there's an interplay between the two parties, I don't charge the speaker time.
Think it was going a little bit longer anyway. Go ahead. Mr. Harrington, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just address the, the last question or comment on the use again of, of that space. Again, we're, we're looking, it's, I, I agree to Monticello Avenue. We want, we want that to revitalize and this is set back off the street. So there's no guarantee that a retail use would be, um, an, an appropriate use here, uh, maybe a cafe, you know, that's, that, that is something that's, that's what we're looking for, that menu of uses to integrate something that works here. That's a benefit for all. Um, it's not, uh, a building that's going to be right up against Monticello Avenue. So it really isn't going to compete with, with, uh, you know, the, the re, refiguration of, of, uh, of, of Monticello and, and the stores there. I think you're, you're going to have a different type of user and use here.
It's not about, it's not about competition with Monticello. It's that there's better uses for the community. And, and the historic committees come in as advisors. They advise that they want to keep things because of their beauty. But the history and the beauty of it doesn't serve the community. It just doesn't. There's other things that community needs than pretty ceilings that were built in the nineteen hundreds. And it doesn't matter what I say here, you are going to approve it or not approve it, but it used, but it's the reality of it. All these things that are being done are not being done with the thought of what really benefits the community. It's just do, it's just, oh, the historic community said this and we don't think it's the best use and we can add another floor. It's, it doesn't work.
Okay. Thank you, Speaker. Can you, can you wrap it up or? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. All right. Anybody else online, please?
There are no other.
All right, let's close the public portion. Do we have any questions for, um, staff?
Well, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry, staff.
Yeah, well, I first just wanted to start with it. I wanted to start with a question from Mr. Harrington regarding the future use of the pool building. It's my understanding that the predominant use will be a community center. And this approval will also allow for light retail, but the predominant use will be a community center. If you could just confirm that, if we need to be more specific with this approval. I think that's something that's important based on, uh, questions that were raised.
I, I don't know if we can commit to like a square footage or anything. It's really going to be an integration of, of, of all, uh, that we're, that they're trying to do, but the, it's, it absolutely is going to be open to the community to use. You know, for like community meetings, gatherings, uh, just how do we program it? It's kind of a blank slate right now, but without, without being permitted, uh, to a little bit of a menu there to, to put that into effect, you're, you're restricted.
Right. So with the typical phasing of a project, if it's anything outside of a community space and a certain threshold of retail, wouldn't that involve coming back before this board for approval, whatever use would be contained within that space?
Well, it, it would, I guess it could, but that's why we're asking for that, that option now so that we, we can have that, that discussion with the community. I believe my, my client is, you know, she's presently speaking with like Michelle Massey and Michael Griffith, uh, about, you know, what best fits this. And, uh, and that's why we're, we're, we're looking for the, the, the options to, to program it.
Understood. Okay. I just wanted to circle back to that first, but, um, give me one second, sorry. So I did prepare a staff report for this project. Um, as we all witnessed, the presentation provided by the applicant's experts was very thorough, but I know the site is not incredibly straightforward. So if there are any questions on the layout and the zoning, please let me know. And not to repeat too much, I'm mainly going to review highlights from my staff report, which we can mark for the record, please. They did November fourth, twenty twenty.
Okay, one moment. This will be, be one for these applications. And what is the date of that again, Lindsay?
Today's date, November fourth, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
So my report includes items that were submitted and reviewed, some site history, meaning the association with the former YMCA building and the existing recreation buildings that are currently onsite and vacant and underutilized. I also outlined the subdivision and associated variances. And then the site plan for the new nine-story building and associated variances. Mostly to speak, so I don't want to repeat too much, like I said, just to speak to the positive and the negative criteria. As always, site suitability is relevant when you're considering a multifamily building in an R one zone. This isn't significantly oversized lot for this new lot as a result of the subdivision, lot eight point oh three. It's over twenty-six thousand square feet. Therefore, it's well suited to the proposed multi-family use. And the floor plans, as you saw, include adequately sized units. I think the unit type distribution is another benefit. We have nineteen studios and even mix of one and two bedroom units, it's split, and a few three-bedroom units, which I think is unique. Fifty-five percent or fifty of the ninety-two units will be affordable. The prior approval had ten stories and now even with losing a story, the set aside for affordable units remains the same. And affordable housing is an inherently beneficial use, therefore helping to meet the positive criteria for the multifamily building. In addition, the rehabilitation of the pool building and the repurposing into a mixed use predominantly community building also helps meet the positive criteria. To speak a bit to the Historic Preservation Commission and HBC staff, they found no adverse effect to the demolition of the other structures on the site. The rehabilitation of the most historically significant structure, the pool building, is a benefit to the neighborhood. As I stated in my staff report, we, we weigh the positive and the negative criteria. One of the pieces of positive criteria is advancing the purposes of zoning. And the preservation of historic structures and historic districts is an inherently beneficial use. And that's what we're, we're looking at is, does this advance the purpose of zoning? One of the things we look out for a use variance. Uh, in the same vein, from a design standpoint, the proposed site layout is beneficial. Uh, the, I think we've mentioned this, the original, the past approval was a large ten-story building was set back from Fairview with surface parking. So with this new proposal, from a design standpoint, the layout is a benefit since the new structure on Fairview. since the new structure on Fairview will activate the streetscape compared to a paved area that it currently exists. And again, the design of the building was found to be appropriate by the Historic Preservation Commission, thus further meeting the positive criteria. And to touch on the negative criteria, the oversized nature of the lots and the surrounding uses in the neighborhood help mitigate any potential detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. So with all that, staff recommends approval with the conditions in my report. The conditions are mostly standard with the exception of two, which I will, give me one moment. Sorry, I just have a lot of windows up. So for one, this is related to the pool building. One condition is that the documentation of the bond amount, so the funding necessary to rehab the pool building, since that's a part of the positive criteria, that amount for the restoration of the pool building shall be filed with the Division of City Planning prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the proposed nine-story building. In addition, related to affordable housing, an affordable housing agreement shall be executed with the Office of Affordable Housing prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And again, with those conditions, staff recommends approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if any commissioners have any.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I, I have one question for Lindsay.
Go ahead.
Lindsay, in regard, Lindsay, in regard to the greenery they're, they're proposing, is it below required, at required, or greater than required?
So there, for the landscaping requirements in the R1, they definitely meet the requirement. It's one shade tree for every 10 parking spaces. If you look at the site plan, there's more than 10 shade trees and shrubbery throughout the proposed surface parking area. And if you look at the, the parking entrance areas, and I don't know if the, the applicants, engineers want to pull up that sheet, but I think you'll see that they more than meets the requirement for, for landscaping for.
Okay, thank you. No, I, I remember the sheet.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody, any other commissioners with any questions for the staff?
Before we go forward, Mr. Harrington, you, you have a copy of Lindsay's report, do you not?
Yes, I do.
And in her report for case Z20-073, she's recommending five conditions and you and your client agree to those conditions?
Yes, we would.
And same with Z20-074, there are eight conditions that, no need to read them in the record, it's in the report, which is on this record. Your client agrees with that as well?
Yes, we, we would.
Okay, so I guess then, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for a motion.
Okay, we'll be doing two motions. Once, the first motion will be on Z20-073 for. May I have a motion, please?
That's for preliminary and final major subdivision with.
Subdivision with C variances.
And the conditions that.
With the conditions that were.
Excuse me, one speaker, you're cutting each other off and you're not making a record that way.
So.
All right, well, we will.
Go ahead.
We will wait on the motion.
All right, I'm going to try this. Last time I made a motion, two years ago, I, I made a hot mess of it. KC20-073, I make a motion that we approve with staff conditions.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
You're muted, Lenora.
Yes, for me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakka?
Yes, for me as well.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes, I see, I'm, I'm not crazy about most aspects of the project, but I definitely see that this is beneficial. And, and so I say yes, and this, I travel on that block a lot. It's my, one of my little shortcuts to avoid going down Montgomery to get downtown. And this block could use, use something like this. And I think the affordable housing is a big, big plus. I have no idea what community space turns out to mean, but one day I'll hope to visit and see for myself. So I'm a yes on this.
Commissioner Shadid?
I add my voice to Commissioner Rothman. I agree with him and everything he said, and my vote is yes.
And Acting Chairman McCormick?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, all in favor with conditions. And for the record, that's six in favor, none opposed.
Okay, moving on to case Z20-074, preliminary and final major site plan with D and C variances, may I have a motion, please?
I'm on a roll. I'll go again. KC20-074, I recommend approval with staff conditions.
Second.
Hey, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakka?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman McCormick?
Yes, I'd like to, you know, say that this looks like a very good project. It's been a long time coming. Like I said, when Mr. Harrington stated that only a couple of us were here for the last initial project, but I love the affordable housing that is starting to come into play within the city and wish them a lot of luck, and I say yes.
Motion carries, all in favor, six four, none opposed, with conditions.
Chairman, can we take five minutes break?
Oh, we're done.
Our last piece.
No, 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 denied.
We just have one resolution to memorialize. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good luck.
So our one resolution to memorialize, we heard this application on October 22nd. The application was for Francisco Builders 166B. It was case Z20-038. It was an amendment to a final major site plan approval for 160-166 Brunswick Street. Present on October 22nd were Chairman Jacobs, Vice Chair Donnelly, Commissioners McCormick, Shadid, Rothman, Mitchell, and Bakka. Did I say that right?
Aye.
That passed, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
That concludes it from this part, right? Lindsay?
Yeah, unless anyone wants an executive session, the only thing I have to say is, you know, please continue to answer Joeyanne when it comes to attendance, just so we have a good sense of who's showing up. We did really well for a couple of months, you know, everyone's getting a little busier. So it just gives us, just makes our, you know, easier knowing if we have six or seven, you know, preferably seven, especially when it comes to this December special meeting we're trying to schedule. I think everyone on this call has responded already, so thank you. We'll let you all know if we're going to add another special meeting for December. But as of right now, we just have next Thursday, that's our regular meeting. And then Thursday, December 3rd, and then we're looking to add another December.
That'll be all Christmas present?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Motion to close.
Yes, second. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys. So quick question, that's Thursday, November 19th, correct, and not 12th?
It's the 12th, so it's next Thursday.
Okay, okay, no worries. Yeah. Okay, good night.
All right, good night.
Good night, all.